I know it went down a little bit, and that, you know, they did bring it down. Now, I can give you comparison of 2002 to now, the cost. So in 2002, a sweeper was $150,000. 2019, that's how much it's gone up.
It's a guarantee on it, Bob?
Three years.
Three years, parts on labor?
Yeah.
So the one that you're liking is $266,997 versus $275,860.
Correct. Did we explore subcontracting the service out?
We haven't. I actually did some phone calls. Beecher sweeps maybe twice a year, which I think is crazy.
Crazy, not enough?
Not enough. I mean, springtime, you have to sweep because you have, it leads to problems. But we've had one as long as I've been here. I've been here 20 years. Why not keep it going, you know, keeping this equipment in-house?
One of the things that's a little different with us, too, is we've got curbs and gutters everywhere.
Exactly.
Some of the towns don't, so the stuff just blows everywhere. Ours gets trapped, we can suck it up. Makes the town look a lot sharper.
So I think if you look at the towns that do lease, or they are the towns that don't do it very often, I guess I think is maybe what Bob's getting at, too. So I think if we look to lease, probably the amount that we would actually do that service for the village would decrease as well.
Now, I can tell you Frankford-
So it's like a policy issuer?
Frankford's always hired it out. But now, I'm talking to Terry Castile, their director, they're thinking about buying sweepers because it only pays, I mean, you can keep these sweepers, you can take care of them. Ours is a 2002. We've taken care of it, but yeah, you have, you know, maintenance things to do it, but it still looks good for 2002. I get compliments on it all the time. It was well taken care of, it's just, it's old, so.
I think it's a valuable piece of equipment for the village to have. I mean, I think it's good for the town.
I like the idea of stretching the payments out over six, seven years.
Yeah, I was just running the numbers. I mean, basically, at seven years, you're at 305, and at five years, you're at 292, I think it was. You're like $13,000 difference for between the five years and the seven years.
I don't think there's any substitute for having cash on hand, you know?
Any other questions or discussion?
How long does it take them to deliver one?
We probably wouldn't get this delivery till winter, so it probably wouldn't be put to use till next spring. But we do keep, we get to keep our sweeper we have in house right now till the new year.
And then the timeframe on the payments would be from the date of delivery, not-
I believe you are correct.
-the date of purchase.
Does Marcy get this budgeted?
Yes, Michael.
I just wanted to mention before we get to a motion and a vote that an installment contract requires an extra majority vote, two-thirds affirmative vote of the corporate authorities, which includes President Cross, so it would be five of the seven.
Well, I guess what I would look for is a motion to lease purchase the Timco 500X sweeper. Equipment cost $266,997 with the trade-in, and I think we'll leave the years open for the moment until we come to maybe an agreement after speaking with the treasurer and maybe administrative oversight if necessary.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Parker.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Boudin?
Yes.
So we've got one, two, three yes and two no's.
And I would vote yes.
President Cross.
But that's still-
Still short.
Short. Okay, so just to go back to the no votes, can we have maybe a reason why or what your thoughts are, what you would like to see?
I'd like to hear what's the subcontracting cost is for comparison.
Yeah, so we pulled this out of the budget. This was a line item in your budget this year. We pulled it out and wanted to see more options than were presented here tonight. I'm not saying, I'm not personally saying no never, I'm just saying no right now because we asked for more information and didn't get it.
So what we're looking for is a cost to subcontract the sweeping at the same rate that we sweep now? So if you could possibly come up with that number and bring it back to the board?
Can I ask a question?
We really don't take questions from the audience during a board meeting. Thank you, Bob. I asked for public comment at the beginning of the meeting. This is a board meeting, so right now, we're having a discussion about action items on an agenda. So that's why, you know, the public doesn't get involved in those conversations typically. If you have a question at the end of the meeting, I'd be happy to entertain-
No, I just heard him chirp in on someone else's side.
He's a village employee.
Okay.
He's the director of Public Works of the village. Item E approval for the 2019 sidewalk project various locations in the village.
We should all have received a map of locations, various locations. This was brought to the committee. I didn't hear anything really. I think we all agreed on the locations. That is probably the rest of the board.
Any discussion from the board? Committee members? If not, a motion to approve the 2019 sidewalk project locations.
Motion.
Second? Motion by Trustee Ham, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Marovka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Parker?
Yes.
Approval for the 2019 street project in various locations in the village.
Sure, I received also a map for those locations. On the map, you'll see a location highlighted in blue, I believe. It's East Corning. So back in, I believe, early 2000s, or even later, I should think, we took over that road from Will Township. Right now, it's tarnished. This winter has actually taken a huge toll on that road. So what we own, we own from bridge to bridge, L shape there. My brought this to the committee is to, it needs to be repaired. It's in bad shape. I also did reach out to Will Township to see if we could get the road back. They do not want the road back. Not at all.
The reason the village took the road back at that time is there was a subdivision that was proposed and in the process of being platted when the economy kind of took a downturn and that subdivision went away. So in the process of getting that subdivision moving forward, the village had taken the road.
For future reference, should we wait until the subdivision is actually-
Well, that would probably, yeah. I mean, if there's a way to do it, I don't know all of the details of how or why or when, you know, the timing of it was, but that was the backstory behind it.
Sure, yeah.
Go ahead, Bob.
So with these locations and that road, I reached out to Marcy. We're going to work together on, you know, the cost. But what me and Troy agreed on is, we could be over budget on this, so we may have to cut areas, but what we want to do is, let's just see what it does when we go out to bid. It may come in under, it may come in over, so we'll just see what the cost is and then go from there.
So once we get the costs, we'll come back and-
We could, yeah.
Look at it and discuss it.
Once you have the low bid, then you could evaluate if it's, you know, to whatever fits it within the budget, you know, cut a location or two.
Any discussion, questions? If not, a motion to approve the 2019 street project in various locations in the village to go out to bid and to analyze after we get the bid on the locations and what will fit within the budget.
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Marovka, seconded by Trustee Ham.
Marovka, yes. Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Item G ordinance and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of professional services agreement for annual administration of the Village of Peattown Downtown Tax Increment Financing TIF District. This downtown district, maybe I'll let Michael explain.
Sure, just to refresh everybody's recollection, Trustee Jones and President Cross both own property within the downtown TIF and are therefore prohibited from taking part in any discussions or votes related to the downtown TIF. So we're going to excuse them for a couple minutes while we handle this item. We have a standing order for Trustee March to chair in President Cross's absence, but without him here, if we could get a motion to appoint Trustee Ham as temporary chair for this item only.
I'll motion it.
I'll second it.
Marovka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Okay. This is a first for me, but I guess we're going to make a vote and discussion on the ordinance stated, and I was going to defer to Amy for some clarification and discussion.
Okay. So this is just an ordinance describing a service agreement between the Village of Peattown and Jacob and Klein and the Economic Development Group. So that is the group that we hired to do the TIF study for us, and we also entered into a service agreement with them on that, administering that TIF for us and doing the service agreement for us. Now, the reason I bring this service agreement back to you for TIF I is because the comptroller of Illinois is who we would submit our reports to for the TIF. They prefer to have one agent submitting reports to them. So since we have a service agreement with them for TIF II, it would not be, we would not, as the village then, if we submitted reports to them and did joint review board for TIF I, then they would have us be doing it for TIF II. And we already have an agreement with the Economic Development Group to do that for us, so we would, I would like to recommend that they just do it for us for TIF I as well. So that's what this agreement is for, not to do any kind of study for TIF I or do any anything else for us, just do the, submit the reports for us. Then Marcy's already going to be doing all the auditing for us. She would just supply them with, you know, financial information. They would chair the Economic Development Review Board, and then we would, they would submit the reports for us, as they would do for TIF II.
So the state wants a step one?
They want-
One agency?
Yes.
We've already hired the guys at TIF II.
Yes.
So now we got to include TIF I and TIF II?
Yes.
I'll motion that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Ham?
So before we move on from that last, excellent, John. So President Cross is taken back over for the remainder of the meeting, and I just wanted to clarify, so, you know, not only can they not discuss here and participate in these votes, but they can't, they're not eligible, their properties are not eligible for any TIF benefits or anything like that. They had these properties prior to the TIF being created and their TIF statutes dictate all these things.
And even once we leave office, as long as we own those properties, we cannot participate in the TIF. Once we sell the property, then the next owner would be able to participate in the TIF. But in perpetuity, whatever that word is, as long as we own it, we cannot participate in the TIF. All right. Item H, resolution, a resolution to the Village of Peattown, Illinois Propose Tax Increment Finance District Number Two Redevelopment Project Inducement Resolution. Yes, please.
So this is in regards to Mr. Patel's property, the truck stop, the hotel, and the TIF. And I'm going to just reach back here to page two of three and kind of take a few blurbs out of the document itself to explain it, because I think it will do a better job than I would on my own. The redevelopment of the property within the area will entail expenditures of substantial time, effort, and money for public and private TIF-eligible project cost. And that but for the assistance of tax increment financing, the proposed project is not financially feasible as evidenced by the developer's request to the village for annexation of the site and subsequent TIF. This resolution is intended to induce the developer to commence the project and to seek reimbursement from incremental real estate tax revenue received by the village or from other sources, or maybe agreed to between the village and the developer, which are necessary to accomplish the goals of the Peattown TIF District Number Two Redevelopment Plan and projects as may be established by the village. The Board of Trustees has initiated an examination of the proposed area as to be amended and believes that expenditures of public and private redevelopment costs in futurants of the potential redevelopment plan and project should be allowable, project costs under the redevelopment plan, provided that this resolution is not a guarantee of the amount of project cost that will be allowable, if any, but rather as an indication of the intent and sense of the village at this time. So we're just saying with this that we would like to induce the project to continue, that it may, it may happen before we get the TIF in place, but that the TIF is actually needed for this project to take place. So we would like to ask him to approve this resolution now so that he may be eligible for project cost.
So it's not putting, it's not putting a TIF in place?
No.
It's not doing anything in that regard?
No.
It's just saying that the TIF is necessary-
Yes.
-for the project to go-
And it is not, it does not take the place of a redevelopment agreement. That would be the details of what increment from the TIF that he may get for his actual project. It's just a very high level of concept that you just mentioned.
Without going into details, the negotiations-
Yes.
...are proceeding?
Yes.
There's still engagement by the developer?
Yes.
Generally, good faith?
Yes.
Expect closure?
Yes.
Firing, enforcing catastrophe? Sorry, not trying to make you nervous.
No, I think it should be a lawyer. No, I don't agree with that.
Staff has been, many communications on this project that it is moving forward. Any other questions or discussion on-
I have a question about it. If everything proceeds as planned and things go good, a lot of people are asking me, when would they see action out there? Do we have a projection?
Well, I mean, the developer would still like to break ground by fall, late fall, you know, Octoberish, November. That's, that would be ideal for his timeframe, so we would, we would like to meet that timeframe if possible.
Any other discussion? If not, a motion to adopt resolution number 19-R03, Proposed Tax Increment Financing District Number Two Redevelopment Project Inducement Resolution.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Ham, seconded by Trustee Marovka.
Ham?
Yes.
Marovka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Bowden?
Yes.
Questions of the press? Correspondents, communications, petitions? Motion to adjourn?
Are we allowed to question now?
Well, we had questions earlier. I'll answer, I'll try to answer a question for you now. Yes, ma'am.
And I was being polite, waiting to get this resolution. What I'm curious about is that, this is a resolution strictly for the-
It's a resolution stating that the village board feels that that TIF is necessary to move that project forward.
So by the project, you mean that-
We're talking about the travel center and hotel. Correct.
Well, my question then is, why can't we go and use some other people coming in? Why can't we have them in the mall there? Now, you said the last time I asked the question, for five years, you tried to get it. For five years, you didn't have sewer and water. Now, we're bringing sewer and water.
You know, but that's, that's not what we're talking about now. We're talking about a proposed project that's in place now, that's in the pipeline, that's working, and that's what this resolution is in regards to. It's not, what if we could get this, or what if we could get that?
Well, let us say we did find one tomorrow, what we have.
If you find one tomorrow, bring them to us, please. Okay, thank you.
So we've been there for 20 years.
This, my, yes. If you're going to talk, if you're going to talk, we need you to step up to the mic and give your name, please. I mean, I should have had, just so everybody knows who we're talking to.
Anne Rosenberg? This is my first meeting, so I'm trying to catch up. I just wanted to know, when Dr. Patel came and approached you for this project, was it on the understanding that that property would have to go under TIF for him to do this project?
I think, I think common sense from, like anybody, looking at a project of this nature and this type of development, a TIF would be necessary for anything on that side of-
In Mantino and all, Murbane, Bradley, each one of those places where they built these properties like this?
Mantino had how many TIFs?
They saw other TIFs.
I believe Mantino, I believe Mantino had three different TIFs, I think.
They had a downtown one, I know, back in the-
So there's, I mean, a lot of those are part of TIFs, correct?
For the hotels.
Correct. Not necessarily the hotel, but for development. TIF is all part of development. It's all part of economic development, and what this village is looking at now is trying to create some economic development. To create economic development, we have to look at, you know, any of the instruments available to us to do that, and that's what we're doing right now.
So this TIF lasts how long?
TIF is 21 years typically.
23.
23, sorry.
So in that 23-year time period, the people of the town have to pick up basically the bill? I mean, the school now is asking for a referendum in the fall-
When we get, we're going to, when we get to the, no, but when we get to the TIF, this isn't-
So now we're going to give out-
There's going to be a TIF hearing. There'll be a TIF hearing when we get to the TIF, where all of these questions can be asked and discussed in that forum of that TIF hearing. All of, this is not part of a TIF hearing, this is just simply a resolution by the board saying-
I know, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, when we get to the TIF, there'll be a TIF meeting, TIF hearing, and then-
Will we be able to speak-
Yep, absolutely.
-after you have your meeting, or before, when we don't hear what you say?
No, during.
So we get the question.
During, that's a hearing, so during.
I'm just-
Yeah, during.
Making sure.
Right. During a regular village board meeting, when we're discussing a particular action item on the agenda-
Right.
-that's for the board to discuss. You know, it's not necessarily for somebody in the audience to comment on or interject to unless they're a staff member or somebody that's part of that action item, such as a petitioner. That's why, you know, I'm not going to get into a thing where-
But we're part of the village, though.
I understand that.
Why aren't we not allowed to comment on these things and ask questions about it?
I'll answer your question, but when we're talking and we're having an internal discussion, that's not the time. It's just not the time.
But when do we get to talk, to discuss with you?
During the public comment that was held at the-
At the beginning of the meeting.
In the beginning, but we haven't heard-
It was before we got in the meeting.
But we haven't heard, but we haven't heard then what you're voting on, you know, all the specs. We haven't, you know what I mean? To be able to ask questions. It's like the cart before the horse.
I guess my point, I guess my point is that, like, when we're talking about-
I was trying to, you know-
No, I understand. And like I said, with you, with the whole TIF, with the whole TIF thing, there's a long process for that. There's TIF hearings, all of the taxing bodies.
Right.
You know, they have a joint commission, a joint meeting.
I just wanted to know when he came to you for the project, that, you know, he said he would do this project only if he got the TIF. That's all. I thought, from what I understood, I thought he had the funds to do this project, but apparently not, unless he gets the TIF.
No, I think, I think the TIF, the TIF is instrumental in this project moving forward.
So he doesn't really have the funds to do the project unless he gets the TIF.
You are, I'm here from eight to five every day, Monday through Friday, and you are always welcome to come and talk to me.
Well, I'm here right now asking.
But I'm, I'm letting you know my accessibility, and you can come talk to me and ask me all the questions you want.
And what I'm saying is, in my mind, for this or any other major development to happen in that I-57 corridor, a TIF is necessary. Nobody's going to come in and do a major project, a 22, $23 million project, without some type of TIF assistance or incentives.
And in Kankakee, too? I went to that, that-
I don't, I'm not talking about Kankakee.
Right, but they had, they had that one meeting that we all went to at that field, and, and all the people coming in there and all, everything going on. We haven't discussed any of this with them, how they're bringing all this business in and what they're planning on putting in this corridor. Will this match that, or are we going to be an eyesore? Because they were talking about all these different, you know, homes that they wanted to build and, and bring the people from Chicago in, and they wanted high-quality townhomes, you know, and everything to go with it. So is this truck stop going to mesh up with all this, or are we going to be an eyesore?
We're not going to be an eyesore.
Okay. Well, I'll see what-
It'll look like Monique.
Yeah, so, I would, you know, I was wondering if anybody had talked, spoken with them to, to, you know, the project to all mesh? Because I think that's what they were trying to do, is, that's why they had it for Peattown, for us to get together and hear what they had, were planning, and what they were planning to come down 57. I was just wondering if anyone spoke with them yet.
Not, not in regards to this development, no. This, this development is our development.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment if possible.
Sure.
My name is Matthew Zabrowski. I don't think I'm alone in saying that I think a truck stop is a terrible, terrible idea. And, you know, there's many issues, from noise, pollution, to crime. I live in the meadows. There's already people going through cars and stuff. You know, a car was stolen in Bill Landings. You know, you want a town to be nice. You think of affluent communities, do any of them have truck stops? I can't think of one. I just don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anything else from the board?
Could I just say one more thing? My name's Penny Lund, and we moved here 10 months ago from Orland Park. And I would ask you to please talk to the new mayor of, that was elected last year before we left, Keith Pecow. And actually, the mayor of Orland Park that was there for 25 years, he unseated him, and it was all about the huge apartment building complex that was supposed to have all these stores around the first floor at 143rd and La Grange. I'm sure you've seen it. And it's called 147-5 La Grange. And it's called 147-5 La Grange. And when they proposed that, that project, it cost the village something like, I don't know, 57, 58 million dollars. And the developer only paid 1 million dollars. And, and they would, he would be able to tell you all, all the details. I don't know all the, I don't remember. I remember reading it. But he knows all that details about the TIF and what happened in Orland Park. They finally had, we were at 158 million dollars in debt. And finally, they had to sell it back to the owner. I, I think it would be worth a conversation as a one professional to another. And I would just suggest that you talk to him and see some of the liabilities of entering into a 23-year TIF with somebody. It's just a suggestion.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? If not, a motion to adjourn, please.
Some movement.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, second by Trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Marifka?
Yes.
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 Meeting's adjourned.